Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, March 8, 2022, Board of Supervisors. We currently have four members physically here and one Supervisor Geramendi will be joining us today via Zoom. At this time, we will be closing into closed session and Clerk, if you could please read out.
Item 1, pursuant to government code 5465B1, public employment, title, planning director.
Thank you. And for anyone online and in the room, when we come back into regular agenda, we will be moving regular agenda item number 11 up at the consent. Thank you.
And for Chair, there is no online comment for the closed session.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Uh, do you?
No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome back to the regular agenda for Board of Supervisors, May, March 8, 2022. If you could please stand for the Plaid.
I am President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll have the Clerk read out, report out from closed session earlier this morning as well as last week.
Closed session for today, March 8. Item 1, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employment, title, planning director, no reportable action taken. Closed session from February 22nd. Closed session, item 1, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Barr versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 18CB42976. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item 2, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employee performance evaluation, title, county counsel, board action, no reportable action taken. Item 3, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employee performance evaluation, title, county administrative officer, board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, we will be going, we will be moving recognitions and acknowledgements and staff announcements to the end of the agenda today and we will go into public comment unless there's any Board member that wishes to state otherwise. Okay. At this time, we'll go to general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. Is there any public comment not on the agenda?
I just wanted to clarify what I think I just heard. Are you moving the recogni, the acknowledgements for like economic and arts and the Red Cross to the end of the meeting?
Correct. Yes.
Well, that won't work for me. Why are we doing that?
Because Supervisor Geramendi is on Zoom and we have a hard stop to allow him to participate this morning.
Good morning. Greetings from Double Springs, First County, seat of Calaveras, a peaceful, a peaceful little community under duress. We appreciate the efforts that have been made to stem the traffic. Pretty ineffective, sorry to say. But we've got another issue that has arisen. I don't know if it's PG&E or somebody has marked all the trees on Double Springs to be cut down. We want to know why. We want to know why we weren't informed. If my supervisor could look into it, it put a lot of minds at rest because it's really disconcerting. I'd say between 30 and 40 trees are marked for annihilation, excuse me, and 13 of those trees I planted 30 years ago and hand-watered for five years, walked the five-gallon buckets across the road. So if we're losing our environment, our beautiful scenery, we'd like to know and we'd like to be recompensed somehow by somebody for the destruction of what I think is a beautiful community on Double Springs. The last thing I'd like to do to say is I'd like to see a proclamation from this Board of Supervisors supporting the people of Ukraine and the President, Mr. Zelensky, on our next agenda because I think it's vitally important that all Americans take a stand at this time or we may not be able to take a stand in the future because we're going to hell in a handbasket, America and the world. And we're watching it on our TV and it's frightening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other in-person public comment before I allow the Clerk?
Well, thank you. I'm here on another matter today, but since there's public comment available, some things that the Board has done recently have really started to bug me and I just tried to pack it away and not worried about, worry about it because there's other things to worry about. But the notion that elected officials form their own union and then to talk about pay increases is foreign to me. The union is you. You are the union. And now we see the union being injected into it, which will probably come up with recommendations. I know you guys want to give yourself a 3% raise every year for the next five years. When I was growing up, if I wanted a raise, I had to go talk to the boss. I had to prove my value and he had to have the money. The answer wasn't always yes. What this Board needs to do to show that you're, that you represent the people, you need to ask your boss for a raise. And that means putting it on a ballot, telling us why you need it, why you deserve it, and do we have the money? And the boss will decide whether you get it or not. And just like in my youth, the answer isn't always yes. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more in-person, I will allow the Clerk to go to Zoom. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
There is no online public comment.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah.
Bonnie, can you, can you come back up to the microphone a minute? I have a couple of questions regarding the trees, so I have a place to start. Is there electric lines running down where these trees are marked up above?
There's telephone poles on my side of the road. There's electrical poles running in the back of my property, but the trees that are marked are on the other side of the road.
So there's no power lines there?
There's no power line there. And I'm wondering if it's underground because they've got about 50 huge telephone poles stacked up at the PG&E plant up the hill.
All right.
So that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, is there any online comment?
Excuse me. I don't want to talk about something. I just would like to ask if you could take the Red Cross item and put it to the next All the Red Cross people are deployed everywhere and we, I was the one that could make it.
Yes, I'm looking at Stafford now and they can do that. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other online in-person, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are multiple items on the consent agenda. Is there any Board member that wishes to pull an item? Is there any public comment? CNN is the motion and before we do a vote, a reminder to Board members, we will be doing roll call today.
So move.
I will start on the screen. Supervisor Geramendi.
Chairman, aye.
Supervisor Callaway?
Aye.
Vice Chair Topfennari?
Aye.
Supervisor Doppa?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Five votes. Next, we will move on to the regular agenda. Is there any, I'm going to turn it over to the Clerk at this time.
So we will, I'm sorry, going back to the recognition and acknowledgements, we will need to pull item two, the information item, agricultural, receive the annual Calaveras 4-H presentation, we'll move that to a later date as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Regular agenda, item 10, action item, administrative office, provide direction to staff regarding recommendations for congressionally directed spending requests.
Would that, we're pulling that and moving it to the 15th. Is that correct? Okay.
Item 11, action item, division of cannabis control, adopting uncodified ordinance, reducing the cannabis cultivation tax rates specified in section 3.56.050B1-3 by 60% on a temporary basis as authorized by section 3.56.070 and authorize summary publication. Requires an affirmative for his vote.
And I just wanted to do a housekeeping. The ordinance itself, the text of the ordinance was not picked up by our agenda management system as part of the packet that went online. So if anybody wants a copy who doesn't already have one, they are printed out on Medias.
Thank you. This time, I turn it over to Ms. Von Latta and Mr. Oliver.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board, Doug Oliver, interim Director of Cannabis Control. What we bring to your Board today is the second reading of the ordinance that would temporarily reduce the tax rate for cannabis cultivation. Your Board heard this as first reading February 15th, wherein your Board had directed staff to make a few changes. So what we brought back are those changes, a 60% temporary tax reduction and this being spread across four quarters. At this time, there really isn't much else to add to it, but to say the staff recommends that the Board do adopt this ordinance. Is there any questions?
Any comment? No? Okay. Would that bring it back to the Board if there's any questions at this time before move it back to public comment?
I have, Madam Chair. This was handed, this was handed out to us, I think Sarah just talked about this findings that was handed out to us. I can't, I can't agree with this at all. I'm, Board of Supervisors finds that a temporary tax relief to cannabis business is in the public benefit. I can't, I, I'm speechless to those words. So I will be voting no for this item.
Any other public, Board comment? Supervisor Geramendi, before I move it to public comment? Okay. Thank you, Doug. At this time, we will move it to public comment. Please be mindful of the light on the, on the podium. We will start with in-person in the room and then we will allow the Clerk to then go over to the Zoom to attract a public comment on Zoom. Is there any questions about that? Okay. So we'll start in the room with public comment.
Well, I've never been the kind to say, "I told you so." And I've been resisting the urge to do that and my resistance has broken down. For many years, we warned the Board that getting in to a criminal enterprise like marijuana in the county was not going to turn out good. We warned you about all the things that can go wrong, taxes not being paid if you had taxes, enforcement, budgets, everything else, and it's finally happened. Now, the question that comes to mind when I thought about it this morning, is there an inability to pay tax or is there an unwillingness to pay tax? So far, we haven't heard of why these things are happening, but it happens to businesses throughout Calaveras County. Businesses go through difficult times. They don't come crybaby to the Board for tax relief. No one else is getting tax relief. And so we've got these problems we have to deal with and it's unbelievable. Your solution, you come up with a solution, let's reduce their taxes by 60% and give them 33% more time not to pay us. Now, all this is doing is creating a hole in the general fund. Expenses for other departments are still being paid out. They were supposed to be backfilled by marijuana taxes or whatever. Those aren't being paid. Who is going to fill the hole in the, in the general fund? It's going to be the taxpayers, not the tax-owers. It's the taxpayers who are going to foot the bill for this and they don't deserve to be in that position. So I think, you know, the whole thing is just, I can't believe you're doing that. I don't know if any of you will take credit that it was your idea to do this, but it's pretty crazy. So what I would suggest is that the tax collector notify all permit holders what your current tax is, including penalties and interest, and you get 30 days to pay your taxes and then we see if the promise of enforcement will actually be addressed. You get your permit yanked. So you've got 30 days to raise the money. You know, you've got real property, you've got land, you've got investors, you've got partners, you've got friends, you've got family, you probably have money left over from years of growing already. So come up with the money, pay your taxes or lose your permit. Now, if your investors and friends and stockholders and all the rest of it are in jeopardy of going down with you, losing everything, if you lose your permit, they'll probably come up with the money. So I would rather see that happen than this unbelievable scheme of lowering taxes and increasing time is going to fix the problem and the hole in the general fund only grows larger and you become, this county becomes less effective at any enforcement when you start giving it away like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room?
Didn't plan on staying, but I just caught my eye and the first statement out of this man's mouth was, "It's a criminal activity." As far as I know, marijuana cultivation is legal in California now. So the premise from which he's basing all of his suppositions, I think, is invalid. What other business in Calaveras has an extraordinarily high tax base as cannabis? None. That's why they're asking for relief, I believe. I mean, I'm not growing and I don't have any growers in my family or in my neighborhood, but the whole idea that the business is criminal is ridiculous. It's ignorance, just plain ignorance.
Thank you. Is there any other public?
Hi, I'm Alice Montgomery. I'm from District 3. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I think pretty much no matter what anybody says, we're kind of all in this together. So being that we're all in this together, there's about 46,500 of us in the county. There's about, I guess, 64 growers. So I'm not sure how lowering taxes for 64 people against 46,500 is a good idea, but if you want to do that, it's going to be about what, a little over $2 million? So if each one of the supervisors wants to write a personal check for about a half a million dollars, go ahead. Other than that, I don't think the voters would say it's okay with us and I don't speak for all the voters. The other thing I want to look at is just this whole situation. I think Supervisor Folandorf, I think your dad was leasing to growers down the hill. I can't say for sure. So I have some questions, just questions. If you know that your family is benefiting somehow from this, is it okay? Is your vote compromised somehow? I just need, is it a conflict of interest? Is there something that would make you be more for it than against it because there was some financial gain in your family? So I think that needs to be addressed and does that put the county at liability for lawsuits? Supervisor Callaway, has you benefited from a dispensary owner in our district providing an enormous contribution to your campaign? Does that affect why this started out being, oh, let's lower the taxes for the dispensaries and then everybody else is like got the Me Too movement, well, we got to lower it for us as well? Can that do anything but compromise your ability to see this objectively? Is that allow you to vote on this objectively or are you influenced? And how can you not be influenced? And how can that not put the county at liability for risk? Supervisor Geramendi, I just wonder how you can continue to encourage these people, many who are amazing, good people, wonderful neighbors to me, when they're losing money and it has nothing to do with what you guys do today? The state of California had it against them from the beginning. If I had someone working for me after six years that gave me bad financial advice, I would have to let them go. I would counsel them, but then I would let them go. Is it doing them a favor to go, "God, you guys are the holdouts. You're doing great," when they can't possibly succeed the way the California laws are written? And I'm not against them. It's just the way it is. I just have these questions.
Is there any other public comment in the room before the Clerk switches over to CNN in the room, Clerk, can you please touch Zoom?
Yes, we have Scott Ballard, project supervisor. Is his last name correctly? Scott? Scott, if you can hear us, we are asking you to unmute yourself to speak. There is actually another individual with their hand raised, Jennifer Smith. Jennifer?
Good morning.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Board. Appreciate your time today on this matter. I think it's important to note that cannabis farmers aren't asking to not pay taxes. We're asking to be at parity with competitive, with like markets. We are still at 80 cents a square foot while Humboldt is at 15 cents a square foot. It's important if we intend to have a sustainable industry. Industry's here. We need a sustainable legal industry in Calaveras. The illegal farms aren't going anywhere and that is the number one competitor of the licensed farms. We can't compete with the illegal farms and if we can't compete with them, we certainly should be allowed to compete with other legal markets. So we're asking for parity. We're not asking to walk away from our taxes and that's, and I just want to make that very clear, especially to the, to the room. Thanks.
Is there any other Zoom?
It looks like we lost the other individual.
Okay. CNN, that there are no more on Zoom, we'll move it back into the room and wrap up the last of public comment before we bring it back to the Board. Ms. Winkie?
Good morning. Sorry, I'm a little late. I didn't think you'd get here until at least 10. Sorry about that. But I just, again, want to remind you all that this was something that was, the people felt strongly that if we were going to have marijuana here, we would tax it and now you want to reduce that tax and, which is just wrong. So I'm hoping you reconsider what you're going to discuss today. You know, you owe that to the, to the people here to make sure that we are getting more revenues into our accounts. And the next item on the agenda, of course, is the budget and it looks like there's a 5% gap in the budget that needs to be filled and part of that would be filled with the tax that's going to be reduced by at least $2,300,000. So I just ask that you reconsider that and, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Hi, Susan Morris, District 4. I'm here to speak in opposition of the 60% reduction of the Measure G marijuana cultivation tax. First and foremost, my concern is before any reduction can be considered, a complete financial audit must be conducted on the monies, the revenues that have been received from Measure G as well as what we've spent them for and what, what comes from other accounts, general fund, for instance. Okay. I'm not sure if many of you know this, but in, in the voter's guide for the November 20, 2020 election, the voter's guide described Measure G. The language was, and let me read it for you, "For general revenue purposes, including the improvement of essential county services such as road maintenance, crime prevention, and environmental regulation, shall the measure establishing maximum cannabis activity tax rate not to exceed $7 per square foot for cultivation canopy and 8% for grocery seeds for the cannabis activities and unincorporated, in unincorporated Calaveras County, generating an estimated 1.5 to 3 million annually, with all funds used locally and annual audits." There's where my emphasis is added here, unless overturned, repealed, be adopted. That was in the, the language when the voters voted. That was in the pamphlet. My question to you is, we have not seen a audit. We have not seen any documentation at all, despite many requests that the residents have requested. So today, as I said, we, we haven't seen an audit. So today, as I said, we haven't seen an audit. We all remember the promise that the growers said that they were going to get millions of dollars here, which unfortunately hasn't happened. And so according to the tax collector's records of 2020, to put the perspective, in perspective, Calaveras County has a total of sixty-eight permitted growers. Thirty out of those sixty-eight failed to pay the cannabis tax for 2021 and are in arrears nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the year. This document came from tax collector, if you look at the red on here, I'm sure all you got this because this report came directly from her, all in red, those are the people that weren't able or failed to pay their taxes. That's almost a million dollars. Okay, this reduction undermines the growers' promise, but for a bit of reality, here's the schedule for the fourth quarter, which is what I just told you, and...
Ms. Morris, the light, the light is turning off.
Oh, okay. Can I just, I just want to make my request, please. So we request that you have a final audit, financial audit, and that before anything happens today, okay? So please...
I have to give, I've given everybody else that time. I can't.
I hope you got my message?
Yes.
We've asked it many times and before this decision is made, the people of Calaveras County...
Is there any other public comment before I bring it back to the board?
Jennifer Stewart, District Two, I just want to finish what Susan was saying. In the brochure of the ballot that we wrote and we read and we voted on, it said there would be an audit before any changes were made in the tax schedule. There has been no audit. There has been no public information that's been produced about how poorly the growers have satisfied their requirements. So when you make a decision to reduce the requirements and the timeframe that needs to be painted, you are being disloyal, dishonest, and absolutely, I think, criminal to the voters of this county. Think about it twice.
Thank you. With that, I will bring a seeing none, no more comments. I'm bringing it back to the board of supervisors.
No more online comments.
All none, okay. Thank you. With that, Supervisor Stoppa, I see that your light is on. Is that purpose? Is there any further comment from staff, Mr. Oliver Van Laade? Okay. Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any board comments at this time?
Yes. Supervisor Callaway? I'll be supporting this for several reasons. One, it's in Measure G that we are allowed to do it. So we're not doing anything that Measure G doesn't say that we don't have the authority to do. Two, cannabis was legal at one time in Calaveras, with the board approved that. Then the board decided it wasn't legal anymore. So the growers or the people in the industry paid their fees, their money, developed their property, their business, so forth. Then the board said, no, it's banned. You can't do it. So the fees we collected, the investment they had done, and it was banned. Then the board says, okay, it's legal now and you have to pay these fees and they go and develop their property. So it's not just like any of the other ag commodities in the county. We haven't said, yes, you can grow almonds, no, you can't grow almonds, yes, you can grow almonds. So if we, me, my vote, have made the commitment to keep this industry whole, Measure G allows us to keep this industry whole. This is one mechanism we have to do it, then I feel we have an obligation to help them. I mean, I understand what you've said. If anybody looks at the budget, they will see how much money's been received and where it's been spent, also on the cannabis fees and the industry. But that's getting back to what Ms. Morris talked about. So based on the fact that we've made a commitment to the industry, Measure G allows us to do this, I'm going to make a motion that we support this. Thank you.
Supervisor Gueramendi?
A second motion.
There's a motion and a second on the table. We do have to do roll call. Is there any other comments? Not seeing one, any other comments? There is a motion and a second on the table. I'll start with roll call with Supervisor Gueramendi.
Gueramendi, aye.
Supervisor Callaway, aye. Vice Chair Tofanari?
No.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Aye.
Myself, aye. We'll move on to agenda item number 12, cloak.
Item 12, action item, administrative office, received fiscal year 2021 through 2022, mid-year budget presentation, approved the mid-year budget adjustments and capital asset list included in attachments A, B, and C, requires a four-fifth affirmative vote of the board.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. There he is. Okay.
I'm sorry, Jack, I didn't have my microphone on. I was just making sure we could mute you.
At this time, okay, everyone good? Okay, we will move on to agenda item number 12, cloak.
Item 12, action item, administrative office, received fiscal year 2021, '22, mid-year budget presentation, approved the mid-year budget adjustments and capital asset list included in attachments A, B, and C, requires a four-fifth affirmative vote of the board.
Ms. Van Laade?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Van Laade from the administrative office. We are about to present to you our mid-year budget snapshot, as well as the requested adjustments that are before you. If I may, I will share my screen.
There we go.
I want the sheriff's.
Could you make it big?
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so mid-year report, these, this report is effective as of December 31st, 2021. And with that, let's go ahead and get started. In general, we're going to talk about the expenditures as of the end of the last calendar year, as well as the revenues. We'll go over the mid-year summary and then a few other highlights. We have as part of the agenda, the schedules, the requested adjustments for your board to consider, as well as a few adjustments that are not being recommended, but will be addressed during the course.
Could you speak, bring your mic? Yeah, the audience can't hear.
Sure. Is that better?
Thank you.
All right, great. So with that, looking at budgeted versus actual expenses. So just by way of review here, we were conservative when we set forth, when we set forth our budget for this fiscal year. So what that means in general is that we budgeted expenses high and revenues low. And we did that so that we would not be in a position where we didn't have enough in our budget to actually cover what we anticipated we were going to need. So we were even more conservative this past fiscal year, so not this year, because of COVID, and we'd made many significant revenue adjustments, reduced projections at that time. What we saw last fiscal year was that many of our revenues that we had anticipated would go down actually were rather strong. Examples of that would be sales tax, Prop 172, which tracks that, transient occupancy tax, et cetera. So we did the same with salaries and benefits. We see here, but working budget, this is for the general fund, of thirty-eight million. So that thirty-eight million number is quite high. We have a lot of vacant positions. As a result of those vacant positions, which there are more of this year than last fiscal year, we are running at about salary savings projection on the order of, of about $6 million. So we'll be looking at that for next year's budget to see whether some of our assumptions might need to be adjusted. But in general, that number is high because of the vacant positions that we have and our actuals are low for that reason. So we do anticipate salary savings. When we get to the fund balance projection, that salary savings will be included in it. Services and supplies are coming in at, again, 43.8%. In general, our expenditures are at 43.4% and coming in and lower than anticipated. So this is just a visual. As we know, the two largest drivers of our budget are salaries and employee benefits, which is the blue here, and then on its heels, services and supplies. So salaries and benefits at 16.5%. Interestingly, despite five-year MOU increases, which back in October, the first pay period of October included a 4% increase for a substantial number of our employees, we only experienced a $400,000 increase over the prior year. Last year's increase at this time was $700,000. So actually, we're experiencing less of an increase than this time last year. The reason for that is because we do have more vacancies at this point. Services and supplies, we're at about $1.9 million over last year with 43.8% spent. So overtime costs, they are higher than last year. This is not a finger point, but we know that the majority of our overtime costs are incurred in safety, typically specifically the Sheriff's Department. So they are up somewhat in many respects attributable to COVID outages and overtime as a result of that. So RIM transfers and RIM loans, right now, we have budgeted approximately $6.2 million for that. As of December 31st, there were $2.9 million outstanding. We will be receiving an update from OES with an assist from our Public Works Department to talk about the 2017 and 2019 disaster projects and where we are at with having made the submissions to CalOES, and which in turn then submits for reimbursement to FEMA. And then the reverse would be true when those funds make their way back to the county. So we will receive that update on March 22nd. So for our revenues, we see that they are, they are high. They remain to be trending high. You know, I caution, I caution everyone that two things are true here. I mean, we were conservative when we made our revenue projections, but for example, with sales tax, we are substantially over our projections, but part of the reason for that is because of the inflation that we're experiencing in this economy. I will give the specific example of gas and oil expense where we, if prices continue to track where they're tracking now, that's just an everyday example that's going to hit all of us and our pocketbooks. And for our internal agencies like Public Works and the Sheriff's Department, we will be taking a look at that particular line item as we move into recommended budget. So while it's, it pleases me to be able to tell you that our revenues are tracking strong. When we look at, for example, sales tax, again, I just want to caution that where we'll experience that isn't just with respect to gas and oil, but in other arenas of services and supplies, where we'll be paying capital all across our budget, where we are already paying more for the same goods and services. So excise tax is coming in strong. Because we were so conservative when we budgeted this number for this fiscal year, mainly because of the uncertainty of having a new program, as a reminder, this was the first full fiscal year for this program, we are actually on track to meet our projection for this current fiscal year and in fact likely exceed it. For that reason, we anticipate and will know more, I mean, just to take a step back, given that your board has approved the tax adjustment, we'll know much more over the course of the next two quarters. Just for the edification of anyone here who might not be fully aware in the audience, that is for calendar year 2022. So where we haven't started receiving funds for this first quarter of the year, they're not yet due, we've had two full quarters. And so for the remainder of this fiscal year, that tax reduction will be in effect for the first two quarters of next fiscal year. For that reason, without more, we're not intending to reduce this projection from working budget in the next recommended budget because it will more or less track where we are at now. So that said, we will be looking at what happens in reality if we know when we have more information and that preliminary estimate is subject to change. So otherwise, our revenues in general are up as a result of taxes generally excluding excise tax being up by about a million, excise tax being up about a million over where we were this time last year, as well as miscellaneous revenue where we received a settlement from an insurer. an insurer that we wouldn't typically see. So again, you can see here that the revenues are up by about 2.5 million. You can also see here that it's 47, almost 48% of budgeted revenue. If we were to look at all funds under the Board of Supervisors, so not just the general fund, our revenue is at 47% approximately. So actually, general fund is performing strongly. So property taxes up slightly from last year. It's too premature to know at this point what property taxes look like for this coming fiscal year. Our assessor is tracking that and will provide us with the information when her office has it. But in general, it's expected to go up slightly as opposed to a decline. As we talked about with sales tax, we continue to anticipate sales tax to grow. At this point, we've received, as of 12/31, 70%. We're much closer now to our overall annual budget for that at this time. So Prop 172, which generally tracks sales tax, is also strong and performing just exactly as sales tax is. TOT also very strong. We maintained prior year actuals for TOT in the budget. So we budgeted exactly what we took in last fiscal year for the TOT budget for this year. As of 12/31, we had, we had received 83, almost 84% of that revenue. And just to clarify, we are not, I am not recommending any adjustments at this point based on prior board direction. The way that, just as a reminder, the way that the board allocated TOT for this current fiscal year was based on the prior fiscal year actuals to be paid out in four installments. And the idea with that, that I recommended at that time and your board approved, was to have a look back, which is why that number and those revenues are not being recommended to be rebudgeted at this time. So excise tax revenues, total budget 3.2, received as of 12/31, 19, I'm sorry, 1.9. As of this date, we have remaining about exactly 10% off of the overall budget of 3.2. So we have received about 2.9 million as of yesterday. So of that, 284,000 was from dispensaries as of 12/31 and the balance from cultivation.
1.929 and you have 284 and...
You know what, I'm very sorry. I apologize. Those numbers were not, but I can tell you that we had received 1.29. I do apologize, I'm not sure what happened there.
I would like to know the actual numbers on...
Sure. One moment.
You don't have to do it right now, you can continue your presentation, but before we end today, I'd like to get the numbers.
As soon as I exit out of the presentation, I'll hold this for you. And I can tell you specifically... Aha, okay, thank you. So for the dispensary number, it was 14.7%. That's 284,341, so that's correct. It's the cultivation number that's incorrect. And that number was 1,644,668. So about 1.65 million. 1.65 million as of December 31st. And the total number is correct at 1,929,009 as of December 31st.
Thank you.
So key areas affecting our position at mid-year, the excise tax, as I mentioned, has come in strong. Just as a reminder, for the last two budget cycles, we have included a 5.3% reduction that was based off of the 1920 budgeted salaries in the general fund. We have left that precise number in place for most budget units, for the budget units with salaries that can afford to absorb them. Just also as a reminder, we do not expect and we're not asking departments to necessarily use that reduction in the salaries and benefits portion of their budget, rather, it's budgeted there, but departments are free to absorb that cut by a reduction in services and supplies, et cetera. What it shows, however, is that even with the 5.3% cut, which was overall in salary savings for this year, something on the order of about 1.9 million, we are still slated to experience substantial salary savings. So again, we will be reevaluating our assumptions, but the primary driver of that is the number of vacancies in the county. So we did in fact increase our revenue projections at last year's recommended budget over the prior year, but we were still conservative. So we will observe that and increase in actual revenues when we talk about the fund balance at the end. I'll actually, I'll just tell you now, we are, the auditor controller and I have conferred and anticipating a conservative estimate of a fund balance of 6.5 million dollars. We will not require, or we do not anticipate requiring the budgeted TEATER transfer in order to close the books in June. So as you'll recall, we've used this TEATER transfer to close our budget gap, but have not yet needed to dip into that. The projected fund revenue includes if we were to make 100% of the outstanding potential RIM loans and the disaster budget revenues. So again, that's a conservative fund balance estimate, we believe, at this time. And then ARPA funding, which isn't actually affecting mid-year budget, but is in fact going to be something we talk about at recommended budget, where we make capital infrastructure recommendations to your board for the animal services, shelter, and the district attorney building. So with that, are there any questions?
Okay, any questions from the board? Supervisor Hallaway?
I just have one on TEATER. Normally, we just do a fixed amount from TEATER. And then sometimes we have to do more. Are we still going to do any, you don't anticipate any from TEATER?
No. So for some years now, there has been a $500,000 annual distribution from TEATER to the general fund. That annual transfer has been made. But the TEATER transfer that we budget so that we can close the gap when we bring the budget to you, we are not anticipating making any of that transfer.
Any other board questions? I can't see Supervisor Gary Mindy, so I am unaware if he has his hand up or not.
I'm good, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is it, Gay?
I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at our board packet and page 117 of 153. There's a chart. Says the revenue.
Okay.
It says overall, we're at 47.6 at mid-year of total revenue. And we've expended 43.7%. So we're real close to what we brought in, we're spending. I do have a couple of questions, though. On license permits and franchise, you have 3,893,926 budgeted. And at mid-year, we're only at 30%, 31% at 1,200,002. Are we anticipating, I mean, those are license permits, and I don't know if those franchise fees have anything to do with the cannabis industry?
Gary? I'm on page 117 of the packet.
I think it's 116.
117 I'm at.
Well, it actually says packet page 117, I think, but it'll say 116 when you're scrolling up.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Table three, general fund working budget revenues versus December 31st, 2021 actuals. So what I'm looking at is your budget and as of December 2021, second, third line down, license permits and franchise fees. We're at 30.9%, was a substantial amount of money that's still out there in the neighborhood of 2.6 million dollars that we haven't collected.
So we're definitely waiting for at least 600 in franchise fees. I can, let me look and see, so that's PG&E franchise building permits, which you'll note are being reduced substantially in the exhibits to budget based on reduced desire for building permits that were actually anticipated to be quite strong this year as they were last year. And that hasn't manifested in the way that was projected at final budget. And then cannabis regulatory permits, where again, those revenues have been reduced down based on, based on what I think we all know to be a softening cannabis market.
And then I'm looking at another item, second up from the bottom. It's called operating transfers in, budgeted 23,616. We received 8,164,634, only 34.6%. That's a big hit.
So a portion of that is the TEATER transfer to balance. It is also as a result of, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Well, you said we weren't going to transfer, your note says we're not transferring any TEATER funds as of 6/31/2022.
We're not, which is why the operating transfer in that's budgeted for that won't manifest. Do you see, we've also got all of the RIM loans budgeted as transfers in. If those were made, those won't be made until the end of the fiscal year. So between those two things, that's a delta, that's about $10 million of transfers in. We've also got a $2.5 million transfer budgeted for PG&E settlement funds that would come in to offset work that has been being done in the Butte Road Recovery operating budget. So between those two things, that's, or three things, that's about $12 million of transfers.
So going back to the license permits and franchise fees, those permit fees are specifically to be used for building department. You're classifying those as general funds? I mean, that's how we are supposed to operate his department and through those fees. So they're exclusively for the building department. Sometimes we have to give him general fund, it's happened in the past, where we gave him general fund dollars because the permits were so low that it had enough to keep the building department and code enforcement running. So we're conglomerating into general funds, the permit fees that he takes in?
So the building department is a general fund department. Well, it is true, you are absolutely correct, that the building department is paid for with building fees. And at the end of each budget year, the excess monies that are brought into the building department are put into a building department special revenue fund. They are isolated from the general fund.
Correct.
However, they are still general fund monies in the operating budget, just like the Butte Road Recovery operating budget is a general fund budget that is paid for by the Butte Road Recovery, the PG&E settlement funds that are in a special revenue account. So that's more or less how those work, but they still are, yes, general fund departments.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for right now.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Is there, yeah, excuse me, is there any other supervisor comment or questions? Otherwise, I'm gonna allow it to go to public, supervisor staff.
I'll reserve mine till after a public comment.
Okay. Okay, seeing that, we will turn it over to public comment. We'll start in the room, and then we will move over to Zoom to help the cloak. So is there any public comment?
Hi, Susan Morris, District 4. I just have a question, and I was looking at the Calvers County Board of Supervisors mid-year document that was submitted with the packet. And it's, I'm looking at page nine, and based on what was just discussed, it might be 122 of your packet. Did you find it? It's in this document, and it's on page, several pages past what you had, what you were just discussing with Gary, till finale.
What is your question?
My question is, it talked, it says the positions listed below are currently vacant and are stated to be unfunded through 2022, 2023. So, and they said staff is working with HR, because I guess you want to delete them. So the situation is general fund positions, and you listed building cannabis inspector three, department analyst, down to planning cannabis planner two. My question is, if these positions are going to be deleted, how does the work get done? Do you have, are you going to replace these, or is this enough to get the job done? Because we have a regulation and we have people that, you know, need this work done. And so I was just wondering, is that covered somewhere?
So, thank you for your question. Yes, these positions, for example, the building inspector three, the county council position, those positions had not been filled. So there are fees associated with this program when they were initially established and we thought what the program would look like. And then as it manifested, these positions, especially in light of the softening market, are reasonable to be deleted. We don't see the need for them at this time. We do still have a cannabis department, a planning department, a building department, ag department with positions in it. And those current existing employees are sufficient in order to cover the workload that we have for the program itself, the fee-based permitting portion of the program.
Okay. Is there ever a report given that shows that the needs of certain regulations will be met, you know? Because there's certain duties in a regulation on, right? Say 1795, and this probably has to do with this. Is there something that shows that the needs are going to be met by the staff we have now? Deleting these positions? Does that make sense? Okay, that's all my question. I'm just concerned, we're deleting money, we're not getting revenue, but we still have a job to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Vicki Ranky, Angels Camp. Just sort of piggybacking, to request that the board put together another presentation... Just sort of piggybacking, to request that the board put together another presentation. Now that we have found out that we've lost our cannabis head person, Greg Wayland is no longer here, that you put together soon a presentation so that the public knows where we're heading now with the marijuana growing, since you're cutting their, our income to this county. The fact that you're cutting the department way down, which, you know, maybe is necessary. But we want to know how you're going to continue doing the inspections, making sure that these programs are being followed. That was huge, huge for us, when this came to our county. And they all promised, oh, no, we're going to be under strict regulations, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Well, we want to make sure that continues. So please, Amanda, if you would ask for that to happen, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room before I ask the clerk to go to Zoom? Seeing none, is there any online comment?
Michael Hatfield tries to hand raise.
Okay.
Hi, this is Mike Hatfield from the Calveras DA's office. We, I didn't have a chance to speak with admin on this, but we had requested to use some of our existing funds to purchase either a vehicle or to get the vehicle outfitted with the lights and everything. We ended up having someone retire in the office, so there's some salary savings because they were a high-level attorney, and they got replaced with an entry-level one. And we've also had a lot of trainings and things like that that were canceled. So this year, we did end up with some savings, so we're not asking for any additional money. We were just trying to see if we could get it added to the capital asset list so that we could either jump on buying a vehicle while this money's available, or if not, if we could, the existing person that we use for outfitting our vehicles, we haven't been able to get, we weren't, for this year, the board already approved the purchase of one F-150, and we did get that. But the company that outfits it, they have been really backed up, and they are just not able to get us in. So we're going to have to go find someone somewhere else to do it. So we don't know how much that'll cost, if it'll end up being more than what was budgeted because we're going other places. So we would like to have some flexibility using our existing budget to be able to outfit this F-150. So it's for investigations, it'll need the lights and everything like that. So we're not asking for more money, we just want that capital asset list to kind of be increased so that we have that flexibility to get that done this fiscal year while it's budgeted, so that we don't have to come back and try to figure out how to make it happen next year. And Krista, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to talk to you after I found out that that one was recommended to be delayed. So there may be a better reason for that. But we would like, if possible, to just add that on to the capital asset list so that we have that flexibility to either jump on buying a vehicle or to get our vehicle outfitted this fiscal year. So we're not asking for more money, it was just a request, kind of shifted, to just add it to that capital asset list so that we can purchase it when that is, if we find it. And it's on attachment D, if you want to see what was put in there.
Thanks, Mike. So the items that are on attachment D, primarily the sheriff's department, and also the item to which Mr. Hatfield referred. So the administrative office, I don't have any issues as it relates to the rationale for these items. As I previously mentioned, for example, with request number three, which is for gas and oil increase, you know, that can be absorbed in this current budget for the sheriff's department. But we know that we need to look at those numbers going into recommended. To answer the question of why none of these are recommended despite the fact that, and not pushing back on perhaps the rationale for the request, is more about timing. Your board was incredibly specific this time last year that it did not want to see new capital requests, and for the most part, new position requests at mid-year. And would rather deal with those items during the regular budget process. We spoke at length with that, about that with departments through last year's budget process and budget development, and issued budget instructions consistent with that. So to me, it is not appropriate to make these recommendations at this time and try recommend deferring these requests until recommended budget. That said, clearly, it is up to you, and if the sheriff's department would like to speak to this request, then I invite them to do so.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Supervisor. Word members, how are we doing today? I'm here with good news. Everything on that schedule, I'm not going to chase you down too hardly on.
It's the other stuff that's not on there.
Well, it's always that. You know me, you know me. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the vehicles. I had put those four vehicles in there, but I have since talked to my vendor. And I want you to be aware, and I've already told Krista this, that the four vehicles that were purchased in this year's budget, we will not receive, because of what's been going on with COVID and the delays and everything, until August of this year. So those four vehicles are going to have to be encumbered for next year's budget. And because I have such a fantastic relationship with my Ford dealer, he has allowed me to order the four vehicles for next year's budget that will probably be here in August. Keep laughing, Marita, I'm saving you money. So that being said, so those four vehicles that are on that schedule, you can pull them off. But I wanted you to know that those four vehicles from this year's budget will have to be encumbered to next year. There's also the cost of the outfitting and everything else that we'll deal with on next year's budget. As far as the gas and oil, Krista and I talked about that. If needed, we can absorb that into our budget for our salary savings this year. Again, to try and help the board out, here, I'm here to help you out, you know that. But, here's the but part. The fentanyl tester and the body scanner, that is something that I'm going to let UnderSheriff Macedo address. I believe that these are priorities because of the amount of fentanyl that we've had coming into the jail. So I just want to bring it to your attention. I know it's a lot of money, but I just want you to understand why we're asking for it at mid-year. So, UnderSheriff, if you would, please.
Sheriff DeVassilio.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Krista, because I'm an old guy, I got gray hair and everything, and I got glasses. Can you increase that in any way? It's very hard to see.
My apologies, here we go.
Okay. More? All right, thank you. I want to have the full context of what.
Don't leave that, Marita, hide that question, Joe. Okay, so in twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-two budget, we did four vehicles.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm assuming the pattern in twenty-two, twenty-three will do an additional four vehicles?
Yeah, that was an agreement that we made.
Years ago, whenever.
Right, to keep these new vehicles coming, get rid of the old.
But this request is for an additional addition.
No, 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 the request that you see on that was for the vehicles that I want to purchase in twenty-two, twenty-three. I was putting it on there because I was afraid, because of the delay that we've always had in purchasing vehicles, I wanted to get ahead of the game. But because my vendor has allowed me to order them without paying for them, take that off the table.
Got it. So in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we will be encumbering for eight vehicles?
Well, no, you'll be encumbering for the four from this year.
Correct.
And those will be the four for next year's budget.
For the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
Yes, ma'am.
So you'll be, that's what I want to know, because this appeared to be an additional.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's not. We were trying to get ahead of the game, but like I said, just pull that off there, don't even think that it's there.
I won't, I will pull it off.
There you go. See, I'm saving you money.
So we gained four hundred thousand?
You just gained four hundred thousand.
Good afternoon. The reason why we tried to order those early is we were notified originally by the vendor that there was going to be a supply chain issue, and that we wouldn't get the vehicles if we didn't order them early. So that's why we made the attempt. Something's clearly changed, and so we had some good news. Regarding the itemized request, the last two, and I can barely see your screen as well. The GCMS, a gas chromatic mass spectrometer, I know that's a mouthful. And you'll see that it's, it can test for fentanyl. It can't, or it doesn't just test for fentanyl unto itself, it tests for a variety of substances that can be used by our hazardous materials team. And why we're bringing that to the board, on August twelfth of this last year, we had an inmate inside the county jail that secreted some fentanyl and brought it into the booking area. Thankfully, that inmate did not reach the housing unit. However, the inmate ended up contaminating herself and dosing herself to the extent that the inmate went down and went unconscious. The inmate was non-responsive, so two correctional staff entered the cell and had to use Narcan to revive the inmate. Unfortunately, one of our staff members also was exposed and went, started feeling sick and went down. And that staff member had to receive two doses of Narcan. That ties directly to the item below, which is the body scanner. I've been checking with other sheriff's offices throughout the state, and at least, you know, from our region down south, we appear to be the only jail that does not currently have a body scanner. What will happen is when the inmate comes into the facility, they will sit in, onto a chair, and it will be able to scan up into the body to determine if there's something hidden or secreted in there, in the hopes of preventing that, whatever's in there, from getting into the facility, whether it's weapons or drugs. One of our significant concerns overall, from a statewide perspective, as it relates to fentanyl, is if it gets into a housing unit, you could end up with a mass casualty event. As you well know, we have a small hospital here. And we do not want to have the litigation nor deaths involving inmates of a significant amount of fentanyl getting into the facility. So we want to purchase those two items. We included those in the request for mid-year. The vendors that we've been in contact notified us that those items could be purchased with American Recovery Plan funds. However, the CAO's office noted that the board had intended to use that for the DA's building, which we entirely support. However, the need for those two items is not going to go away. So it is our plan to either bring a separate item back to the board or build that into next year's budget. The sheriff asked that I brief the board to make you aware that this is, this is coming. These are life safety tools. I do not like delaying the purchase of these. I would have liked to have gotten approval for those today, so that we could have. We've already received quotes for those, we're told, we've been getting pushed by the vendor, indicating that the cost for these is going to go up. So there may be an increased cost based upon the original, as much as ten percent, I was just informed. So I do want to get moving on getting these brought in. Since that event that I noted to you, we've also had some other people try to bring it in, it's been found. I don't want to get too far down in the weeds with the board, but this is an emerging threat, this fentanyl issue, because of the small amount it takes to actually kill a person. So we've had to restructure our booking process, restructure our evidence process, and move some stuff outside of the facility in order to try and prevent this stuff from getting in until we can purchase this body scanner. But we are not as contemporary as I'd like to be with equipment, upfront equipment for testing and scanning inmates. So if the board has any questions about, about any of these, we're here to answer.
Under Sheriff Macedo, on the body scanner, if you detect, does it detect what it is? Or just that there is something?
Yeah, it's just a scan, and it will detect a foreign object inside of a person.
Okay.
And then the inmate would be taken over to the hospital, and the item's removed by a physician, and then it's tested at that point. Sometimes the inmates will remove the stuff themselves before we can get them to the hospital. And then we would remove that substance from the jail and use that other device to test it. I should note, we've had a GCMS previously with a sheriff's office, but those things become obsolete over time. Captain Clay Hawkins had bought one when he came to the office close to twenty years ago. And that tool was expensive at the time, it was a hundred thousand dollars at the time, I remember when he bought it. And unfortunately, it's just gotten very old, and it's passed its, long since passed its useful, useful life.
So.
And I'm sorry to.
Oh, no, no, no.
That tool can be taken out to test hazardous material scenes, to test at drug labs. It is a mass spectrometer, meaning it tests for a lot of substances. It has a field use as well, it's not just specific to the jail.
Okay, so that's one of the places I was going to go. If, excuse me, an inmate, or potential inmate, goes to the hospital, cannot the hospital check for fentanyl? I mean, if they're checking for what it is, why is it that?
Yeah, the hospital does not have one of these devices, they don't do those types of tests. If, the problem with fentanyl, as scary as it is, if it gets loose, meaning outside of its container in an emergency room, we could potentially shut down the emergency room. It'd be a hazmat event, and it would be a circus. Same thing with the jail. So to that, to that extent, no, they do not have the means to test for the substance. We have a presumptive test that we would conduct, and then that would be reaffirmed by the Department of Justice. The sheriff just mentioned in my ear, too, we had a recent case involving a, and it's still pending, so I'm going to kind of lightly dance around it, involved in a subject that was manufacturing explosive devices. And those devices were being detonated in a wide area. So this is the type of tool that we would have liked to have also had to brought into that subject's home and to brought into the area where he was detonating devices to be able to test because staff was coming in contact with unknown chemicals and powders.
Also, when we had our correctional officer go down, and we had the inmate go down in our jail, they got transported over to the hospital, and they actually had to shut down the ER so that our hazmat team could decon it, because fentanyl is so rampant. I was showing Krista earlier, and Amanda knows, when you do Braille, the buttons, when you read Braille, one of those little buttons of the Braille could actually kill everybody in this room if it was airborne. It's that potent of stuff. So it's a huge issue. So I just wanted to let you know, when you talked about shutting down the ER, we already had that happen once.
But they shut it down because they.
They shut it down.
As a precaution?
Yes, and we had to bring our hazmat team in there to clean up everything where our correctional officer and our inmate, where that inmate was, to make sure that there was no fentanyl in the area so that the ER could go back into operation.
So, and maybe this is something for Krista, if I'm listening to the sheriff and the undersheriff correctly, this is a tool that probation can use, hazmat, health and human services.
Our bomb team can use it.
Amen.
It has a big array of uses.
So, given that's the case, could the cost of that be split among the different departments? I mean, I mean, it just.
Corey, I can hear Corey in the back, but she's already throwing daggers at the back of my head.
I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is, I mean, what I'm hearing is a one-time use, but then we can use it for all these other things. That's.
I, thank you for that, Supervisor Holloway. So I.
I, thank you for that, Supervisor Callaway. So I think it's probably premature to know exactly what that would look like. My guess is, and part of it would be that we would need to defer to the sheriff's department in terms of where it's located and who could reasonably have access to it. But we already have a mechanism for charging back various departments, so if were that to be the case, we could certainly, we would figure that out.
And just a moment, Ms. Callaway, when we test this stuff, our team, we have a hazmat team that has to test this stuff. So unfortunately, I would not just give it to Cory and say, hey, go ahead and have your people utilize this machine for testing. We would have our hazmat team go out, because the problem is, we don't know what substance we're dealing with. And I'm not going to put them in harm's way when my people are trained to do that. And you're right, we could, as I use the term AA87, to backfill them if that case ever came about.
I, and that, I hear and I understand that. I guess what I'm hearing, though, is we've had one incident, so we need to buy this piece of equipment.
We've had three incidents in the last three months. We just gave you the one.
Of fentanyl? So if you do the scanner, then you're now going to bring your hazmat team in to the hospital? I mean, it's...
There's two different things going on here. The scanner is going to tell us that somebody we bring into the jail has something secreted within their body.
Right.
Okay. The spectrometer is the one that is going to tell us what it is. So there's two different items, but they work hand in hand. So if we have...
So when somebody goes to the hospital, does this equipment go to the hospital with them?
The spectrometer can, but probably not, because if we have to take, if, okay, let's do a whole scenario. We bring somebody to the jail, we scan them, we find that they've got something secreted. We take them to the jail to get it removed, or excuse me, we take them to the hospital to get it removed. Once it's removed, my hazmat team grabs the item, takes it back over to a secured area at the sheriff's office, where we have a hood that will pull favors out so that they don't get impacted. They're still in a Level A suit to be protected. Then they test it. We would not test it there, because now we're exposing the hospital.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
What happens, though, between, with the employees, between the time they've been picked up and transported to the jail, they're still exposed?
If it's secreted, there's usually not an issue, because it's typically in a, in some type of a plastic bag or some type of a container. They don't, you know, they, think about a drug user. When you see their drugs, it's usually in some type of a container, and that's how they'll hide it, is in that container.
Yeah, and Rick, what I'm about to say is, not a joke, but, because it many times, but isn't this exactly what AB443 was intended for? Is this type of stuff, so you could get up to what other areas around already have, because we're rural, and you've been giving this money from the state to get this type of equipment? Is that not what it's intended for?
Partially. It is designed to help us keep up with technology, and yes, this is part of technology, but we've been using AB443 funds to do other things so that we don't have to come to the board. So last year, we spent almost $390,000 of AB443 money so that we didn't have to come to the board. So it's a combination of things. I mean, I'm not opposed to using that, but the problem is, now we're getting to a point to where I don't have any AB443 to do other things, so now I'm going to have to come back to you. Remember my old saying, pay me now or pay me later. It's, I mean, I try to work with you folks as much as I can, you know that. But there comes a point to where I've overextended my AB443 funds.
So as we sit here today, do you know what the balance of your AB443 funds are right now?
I do.
What is, what is that on?
I have to go grab my notes. Standby.
Okay.
While the sheriff's grabbing that, the one thing that I should have started with is the sheriff's office formed a committee after this fentanyl event to discuss the purchase of these two items. The committee did the research. That committee was made up of correctional staff, hazardous materials staff, hospital staff. It was a collective agreement on this was the plan to proceed. I should have started with that.
And that's understood, Jim. You wouldn't have brought it forward if you didn't have some reasoning to do it.
The balance right now that I have is 1.3. After expenditures of this year, you're looking at, well, figure, I figure about $350,000 we've been spending a year out of AB443, so it's going to drop from there. And you got to remember that I am trying to, and you'll remember this very distinctly, Gary, that I'm trying to keep some AB443 monies, because the way the economy's going, if we go into the tank, we ended up using AB443 monies to fund deputies as opposed to laying deputies off. That's my concern. I don't want to deplete my AB443, because if that does happen, I have a little bit of recourse to keep our constituents safe. Yeah.
One other thing, Supervisor Toffinelli, with the AB443, if you could step back away from that for a moment and just put yourself in the position of a board member, there's a cost to operate a jail, and there's a cost to operate a jail safely, and to consistently defer back to rural sheriff's supplementary funds to supplant away from operating life safety equipment from a jail. I disagree with that. I respectfully disagree with that. And I would ask that you fund jail safety operations like a normal county that doesn't have the ability or doesn't obtain AB443 rural sheriff's funds. I don't, I'm hesitant to have the board utilize AB443 as a crutch, and I'm also hesitant to have the board take the discretionary authority away from the sheriff consistently to use AB443 money, because it hampers our ability to plan for technology in the future, which is exactly what we're doing with a lot of that. There's a separate meeting we could have about AB443, about what we're going to be approaching the board with as it relates to that in the coming fiscal year. And we are already behind, and I do not want to consistently supplant AB443 dollars with county obligations, because it's going to put us further behind.
And just to kind of give you an idea, Gary, there's, I've got a list going back to 2018 of some things that we've used AB443 funds for. Outfitting vehicles for $148,000. We spent $150,000 out of that to buy that rescue vehicle, the Bearcat. MDTs for our cars. We've been buying all of those out of AB443 most of the time for our vehicles. I've got our recruiting video. We paid for that out of AB443 to try and keep our staffing levels up. We purchased, if you remember correctly, the OHV/Marine Safety Vehicle out of AB443. It's a marked vehicle. I made the deal with you guys a long time ago that all marked vehicles were bought by the board. I'll buy all the unmarked, but I went ahead and bought this. So those are the types of things that I am using AB443. It's not like I'm just collecting the money.
And Rick, I don't disagree, because we had those discussions. Every time you went to spend it at budget time, you came forward and said that you would spend AB443. I'm very well aware of all those vehicles, what you've been spending on. I was just making the point, though, that this is somewhat what that AB443 funding is for. Even though you were spending on other things, you wanted to put some reserve in for salaries so we don't lose deputies. I completely understand that. But this is part of technology that you were talking about, that to keep rural counties up to date, that they otherwise would not have funding for, and I see Jim shaking his head no in the background, that this is some of this type of stuff that it could be used for. I understand what you're talking about, about the jail, Jim, but this would be done before they go into the jail. You wouldn't get them into the jail, and then...
No, that's not true.
It's done in booking.
It's done, it's done in booking.
In the jail.
In the jail, okay.
Yeah, we kind of look at the jail weird. The booking area is still considered outside the jail, because it's not the housing unit. There's a threshold there. And if this was like a new emerging technology, Supervisor Toffinelli, I would agree with you, but it's not. A lot of the jails already have this. We've just gotten away with it, because we haven't had a fentanyl problem up here or a significant issue, or we found it through normal search, through normal means to search. But this problem popped up. It was a life safety issue. We wanted to move forward with it. If you'd like to have a cup of coffee sometime, I can talk to you about where we're headed with AB443. Sheriff and I have been meeting about this as it relates to rapid DNA, where we're already behind as it relates to that, some other items in order to help us identify victims of child sexual abuse, child molestation, child pornography. That's what we're trying to dedicate our AB443 funds in the future, not to stepping backward five years and trying to catch up to the rest of the counties that already have a body scanner. And I use five years lightly. It's 10, 10 years with some more.
I have a question. What, due to the multiple incidents, I think you mentioned three, what is the impact to your operation and death because of this?
The correctional staff ended up taking the rest of the day off and a few days to recuperate, so we encouraged them over time to backfill his position. So, I mean, it's not just, you know, the officer goes down and he pops back up and he goes back to work. It doesn't work that way. It's a drug that he inhaled, so he's basically under the influence, not by his choice. Yeah, and there's workers' compensation related to that also, because it's all done on the job. So there's other costs involved in that.
And that was my point, and I, thank you, asking that.
Ms...
Yes, Supervisor Toffinelli.
Fentanyl's a real, the real epidemic we're dealing with in America right now. I mean, you brought a Braille button, you know, something smaller than a grain of sugar can kill multiple people. It's, I, you know, after stop, talking to Sheriff De Vassilia, I'm just surprised how much people are trying to bring it into the jail. I mean, it surprises me, but, you know, it may not surprise you, but that's just because I don't, I don't work in your field, so I don't deal with that necessarily the same way. You know, I would have pushed back on the four vehicles. Thank you for finding another path, but when it comes to the safety of our officers, and, you know, potentially the other inmates, we have to be aware of at the same time, you know, or even the hospital staff when these people overdose, because something broke open in them, such as the one case, and, you know, contaminating everything in the emergency room. I think, I think this is truly an important thing. I wish it would have been brought forward during preliminary budget last year, but this epidemic's really happened more so this year than prior, so I understand why, you know. Typically, I want to wait for preliminary budget, but a safety thing like this is truly, truly important to all of our people, and really hits home for me. So I could support that. But the hard thing I'm having is kind of, they both go hand in hand working together. You know, so what, yeah, what's the cost, the delay, and where, if we do entertain this, where are we going to look for the funds to make up for it as we move forward?
Supervisor Staubert, just to be clear, and I think Under Sheriff Macedo's already spoke to this, we've been looking at this for over a year. We looked at multiple units, because there's different styles. There's the style that you see in the airport. There's a style where if you watch any television crime shows, you'll see they'll, they'll stand on the conveyor belt, and the conveyor belt actually moves them while they stand there, and then there's this unit. So we've been looking at multiple units, and it takes time to look at all these units. We have staff actually go to facilities to observe how the units work, talk to their staff to see which works better, which works not as good, what type of warranties they had. So it's taken a year. We would have loved to have brought this to you, but we just didn't have the information. And I apologize for bringing it to you at mid-year, and I understand that. It's just, it's gotten to the point to where we need the item. We've gotten to a point where we have some solid numbers, and we'd like to purchase it. And again, like I told you earlier, and I told Ms. Von Latta, I'm not telling you that... It's an item that is needed, okay? It's something that is up and coming. Whether you want to put it off, I don't want to tell you where to get the funds from. I'm just telling you, this is a definite need.
Well, we're in agreement there. I think I said that, said as much just now. It's, you know, first and foremost, when it comes to the safety of our, and we're responsible for the inmates also.
Well, and we have been, knock on wood, very lucky. We have not had an inmate death in our facility. I don't want to start.
Right, right.
So that's, that's the key. And again, it's, like you said before, it's not just that inmate. It's our correctional officers. It could be the hospital. And like Ms. Wallendorf talked about, it's the workers' comp. There's everything that goes with it. So to me, it's cheap insurance. It's a lot of money, but it's still cheap insurance.
Were you forced to give Narcan to our officer at the same time?
Yeah, two. They got dosed in the jail.
Two different times?
And before they got back to the hospital, or before they even made it to the hospital, which we all know is two, three minutes away, they had to be Narcan'd again.
So, so do doses of Narcan to preserve until they got to the emergency room?
Yes, yes.
Serious stuff.
It is. It is very serious stuff. So, any other questions?
Unmute and let us know if you have anything to say or not, Jack.
Thank you. Supervisor Wallendorf, if you could turn on your speaker, your microphone here. I have no questions at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, Chuck, Chuck, could you turn your microphone on? We can't hear you.
It's on for her. She, she just needs to make sure she speaks directly into it, I think, or maybe, maybe it got adjusted down.
Does that work better?
Yes.
We need to get these two checked, then. Well, no, last week we had the same problem. He just doesn't want to listen to, didn't want me to be heard. Okay, is that better for you guys online?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Is there any, do you have a question? Okay. Is there any, I'm going to go back to public comment, because I believe we kind of got cut off. Is there anyone still waving their hand on there?
There's none from the public. Sam Leach is patiently waiting, I'm sure, to speak on something else, but as far as public comment now.
Okay. Sam, is it regarding your own budget or a comment to the discussion just now?
No, I'd like to comment on the discussion right now, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but just wanted to chime in and support the sheriff and the under sheriff's comments, as well as Supervisor Staubert and the rest of you that acknowledged the seriousness of this. You know, fentanyl is a unique epidemic. It's permeating the whole country, and unfortunately, like, we don't get to be an exception to that. It's a public health crisis. It's a behavioral health crisis. It certainly affects my department. It affects social working, and everything throughout our county. We in probation are trying to do our part. We're doing that by increased testing for fentanyl and getting rapid tests to be able to test in the moment for people who've, who've used or been exposed to fentanyl. We're also carrying Narcan and doing our part to make sure that we, you know, are part of this robust strategy to combat fentanyl. And so I would just support them and you guys also in saying, look, I know the number's kind of big, but the reality is, we absolutely need this. It might, you know, save the life of a county employee or multiple county employees, and I just think it's part of a bigger, a robust strategy. Obviously, not telling anybody how to pay for it, but just really wanting to highlight the importance of it and, and help, you know, kind of...
life of an employee, and we definitely, when we have a significant workers' comp claim, they do look into our processes, what we have to prevent it, those type of things. Over the last few years, we have seen close to $500,000 increase just to our workers' comp insurance, and so having the proper technology to help prevent any type of injuries to our employees also will help keep our insurance rates down.
Supervisor, Supervisor Cowalway?
Are you ready for some comments from the board?
Yes, if there isn't, are there any other staff members on this comment that I'm missing online or before I move? Nope, okay, Supervisor Cowalway.
This is my, these are my recommendations, based on what we've heard from, and including Mr. Leach and Ms. Hawkins, that we support the purchase of the last two items, the fentanyl tester device and the body scanner, for these reasons. It's going to put pressure on the sheriff for the 22, 23 budget, but $400,000 will be reduced from this year because it's going to be moved to the 22, 23 budget. As I understand the sheriff, the gas and oil is going to be an issue for all departments, not just for the SO, and he's going to have to eat the $1,200 somewhere. So, I would support doing what is recommended for item five and item six. Item four is money that we've sort of captured, just, it's sort of a shell game, because, yeah, we're taking it, reducing this year's, but it's going to go into next year's, so the sheriff will have a challenge with his 22, 23 budget. I would also, unless the CAO has some comments, recommend that the DA be allowed to do what they've requested, because it's within their existing budget. Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppa?
For the most part, I agree with Ms. Cowalway. I'm a little confused about the DA's request, because they aren't just, they're, they're saying use existing budget to purchase another vehicle or outfit F-150 with lights and radio. But if you purchase another vehicle, then you have two vehicles, you got to outfit with lights and radios. So, I'd be fine with the excess amount being for outfitting, and we could wait till buying the new vehicle, so that we state that in there, you know? If, if they have excess salary savings and the, the outfitting costs so much that it, over what it's cost, or what the original proposal was on the cost, then we're more than fine with that type of transfer. But when it comes to an entire vehicle and a purchase, we can wait till recommended.
So, in that case, Mr. Hatfield, what do you anticipate the outfitting would be for this, so that we could move that amount into capital assets?
Yes, so if we could move about, it depends on which way, so we all, so we already have the budget for the vehicle and the outfitting, but the outfitting that we're going to have to be done, we won't know how much, because we're just going to have to find someone who can squeeze us in by the end of the year. If we could move, really, just even, so like, if we could just do $60,000, that would be a big enough line item, and that's where we wanted, we were hoping to have that flexibility to say, okay, well, if we can't find anyone to outfit our, the F-150 that we bought this year, then we could probably find a vehicle on the lot to just pick up this year, and then we can-
We do have Supervisor Germaine, that would like to comment on this topic, too. You're muted.
All right, my turn. You know, we are two and a half months from budget, it is not a long time. On the district attorney item, I hear what they're saying, but I've also heard the sheriff ask for the same thing for years, to sweep the salary savings into other projects, and we've almost always said no. So, I don't, I think this can wait. I think we've understood, have understanding on cars and other items also. I think I heard Ms. Cowalway say that maybe item five and six, she would support, but it's going to come out of next year's budget, so in many ways, we're just advancing the funds that'll come out down the road. But I am always extraordinarily hesitant to do mid-year adjust, budget adjustments that aren't needed, especially when we're only, we're this late in the year already, we're only two and a half months from regular budget. So, if the, if there's a, if the, if the idea is to pass number five and six as a forward advance on next year's budget for the sheriff, I'll support that, but the rest of the changes, none of this seems, life and safety has to happen right now. And good job, Sheriff, on getting those four cars reserved. It's good to have relationships with the dealers when you can. That's all, ma'am.
Thank you. Michael, you have anything further to comment? You mentioned the $60,000, and I cut you off.
Yeah, no, we can, we could probably delay this if needed. It's just, you know, we're either asking for the money in a couple of months, or we say we have it right now. You know, we, it's in the existing budget, so we could either get this taken care of now, or we could wait a few months, and then we have to add it on, you know, as a cost during budget, but we won't have the extra budget, you know, it'll be an additional item at recommended budget. As far as the outfitting, because we're going to have to go somewhere else, and we may even have to take it out of state to Nevada or Oregon or something, it'll be just whoever can get us in. The concern is that the cost could be higher than what's actually on the, the approved capital asset list. So, we would still be within our budget, but it, that, that cost may be higher, so even if we could just add, you know, just kind of, it's a blind number, so it's really a guess, but even just $10,000 or $15,000, if we could just add that on for the outfitting, then that would be enough. But if we could just add on the vehicle, I mean, that would be our preference, so that we can do it now, rather than coming in a couple of months and saying, okay, we're, you know, we have our recommended budget, and then we also want to, you know, you have, ask you to try to find where you're going to find the money for another vehicle. So, but that's, you know, that's definitely your board's decision.
Madam Chair, five minutes.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to, hey, Mike, get ahold of Captain Ballard, we have two more outfitters that we might be able to utilize, so you don't have to go out of state.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you. Supervisor Stoppa?
I'd be in favor of the extra amount for the outfitting for now, and if they number it at that time, then they'd be able to facilitate getting it outfitted, but at this, you know, I think Mr. DiVassilio can help out with getting them something closer that won't be additional cost to go out of state. I think that'll, that'll do, but when it comes to the, the other purchase of the vehicle, I'm not in favor of that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comment? Any public comment? Okay. Did the CAO have any other, did your budget, did you have any comment?
No, once we're clear on what the board's direction is, as it relates to the body scanner, the fentanyl tester and the DA's request, then the DA's request is proven neutral, but I'll let you know, once we've got direction there, what we should do.
Thank you, yes.
I have some questions.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to your memo, and the requests by each department that you're recommending, we accept, totaling $406,774. I'm on our packet page 122. Says the total reduction of general fund contingencies of $491,049. However, when considering the reduction in other departments' general fund contributions outlined in attachment A, which totaled $406,774, there's a net decrease to general fund contingencies of $84,275, and it says because of the result of the above requested adjustments. It talked about, above on packet page 120, overall projected, let me see, when, any It talked about a general fund increase, substantial increase to offset that, making it $84,000 total, but when I look at your, your slides that you put up there, on your PowerPoint presentation, on the actual expenses as of December 31st, 2021, it was $33,764, and the revenues were $34,059,559, which was only 47.6% of the actual budget, projected budget at that time. So, that was only the difference, subtract the budget, our expenses from what we brought in, it was only $295,357, if you follow what I'm saying.
I'm afraid I don't.
Yeah, I'm looking at the slide that says expenses as of December 31st. It says actuals. We spent $33,764,000. Then I'm going to the budgeted actual revenues page, that said we only brought in $34,59,559. So, I'm subtracting the 33 from that number to come up with $295,357, so I would say it would cost more than 80, we'd have, to take more than $84,000 out of contingencies to cover the $400,000.
Okay, so, um-
I'm just going by the numbers that are here in front of me.
I understand, so I'll, I'll attempt to explain the distinction. So, what this is referring to is Exhibit A, and, or Attachment A, and what's on Attachment A are department requested adjustments. So, separate and apart from the actual expenses and the actual revenues that have been received to date, what these requests on Attachment A have to do with are things that aren't necessarily reflecting in anywhere in the PowerPoint. These are, for example, let's look at GIS. GIS knows, for example, that this $55,000 for GIS services and professional and specialized services are not going to be used this year. So, that is a net $55,000 increase to contingencies. On the other hand, we look at the foreigners' budget, where there were salary increases and additional professional and specialized services due to candidly, an unusually high mortality rate this year, and as a result, there will be a $48,000 decrease to the contingencies. So, the delta between those two items alone would be about, what, $7,000. So, this Attachment A is all of the requests, both plus and minus, what is approved in the budget. The slides that you indicated and pointed out in the PowerPoint have to do what has, with what has actually happened to date. So, there's apples and oranges, so to speak.
Okay. I'll have a discussion with you after the meeting.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Is it prudent for me to be able to bring up other things right now, as we work forward towards preliminary budget? We, with IWM, which is a non-general fund, there's been a structural deficit for, for years now in IWM. Bringing forth a fee structure that, you know, as we've seen a presentation recently, from IWM, bringing forth a fee structure will not bridge this current gap, as we're all aware. And so, you know, I'm not asking for any of these changes now, but I want us to remain cognizant, I'm going to be requesting some major structural changes in IWM to be looked at going into the preliminary budget. And I, I think it's prudent that we address the, these structural deficits in IWM sooner than later. It's been far too long since we've addressed a lot of things over there. You know, they tend to be a lot more out of sight, out of mind, being at where they're at. The other thing is I had some questions for Health and Human Services. I mean, these are pretty straightforward grant, grant awarded money that would take care of these positions. You were very clear that the positions you're asking for would have a sunset date of June 30th, 2025. If we did a hire now, will we be stuck with those positions? If they, if they came along and they got over a year in, at that, at that point, would we be obligated to continue those positions, or is in the contract when you, when you hire those people that that's the sunset date?
They are fully intended to be limited term, and we would honor the limited term by terms of the grant. What we do find is we have a lot of turnover in Health and Human Services, including our behavioral health departments, and so there's usually opportunity for people to promote into or select those additional positions that are already there, but for these positions listed, they are limited term with the full intention of limited term use.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Yeah, that's it, Ms. Volendorf.
Okay, thank you. Okay, right now, we have midterm in front of us, or mid-year, midterm. If there are any other board questions or comments, we'll bring it back to what has been recommended by the CAO to approve, with a couple of items that have been mentioned by Supervisor Cowalway and Supervisor Stoppa to add into mid-year. And those items being item number five and six?
Four and five.
Five and six?
Four and five.
Five and six?
Yeah, you're, you're right. No, my apologies.
Primarily due to not only safety of the employees, but also the rest of the inmates in the jail and outside agencies that collaborate with the SO. I would echo what Supervisor Toffenari has said, that normally doing capital improvement, this close to preliminary budget, we shouldn't be making these kinds of changes, but given the number of incidences and safety and health, I believe these items, I would support that these items are crucial in moving forward. And then we can discuss the rest of the items that- And then we can discuss the rest of the items that got brought forth by staff for preliminary discussions, along with the other items Supervisor Stoppa mentioned. So with that, is it a motion to support the CIO's mid-year with these two items?
If I may, Chairwoman Vollendorf. So would I recommend in this, should your board decide to approve both items five and six, would be a contingency draw in the amount of $510,000? And then moving money from either services and supplies or salaries and benefits in the DA's budget unit for $15,000 for the outfitting? Is that consistent with what you are contemplating?
We have Supervisor Garimendi.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. That's not what I heard, Krista. I heard item five and six, and Maria had mentioned putting that against next year, so it goes in the preliminary budget, but we get the money forwarded to the sheriff now. And that's $310,000, not $510,000.
I'm sorry, I thought I said $310,000. I apologize.
So.
But in, okay, so just to take a step back, and I invite our auditor controller to jump in here, should she wish to do so. There are two ways to rebudget or to budget for four vehicles that are not going to be received this year. One way is to encumber them, as was being discussed. In that event, then, let's just say, all $400,000 would be encumbered and rolled into next year's budget. So $310,000 would be additional. Alternatively, we can add those to the capital assets list, remove the four F-150s for, and I believe this is what Supervisor Callaway was suggesting, remove those four F-150s so long as no purchase orders have been issued. I don't know whether that is the case. I'll chuck now. But if that is the case, then there would be $800,000 in the budget request for next year, plus the $310,000 for the two items this year. That's what that would look like. Those are the choices.
Hold one moment. Supervisor Garimendi?
Yeah, I'm totally confused now, because I just heard the sheriff tell us that the guy, that the dealership's going to hold those four so it could go into next year's budget. So I'm not sure why we're talking about it, item number four. The sheriff's already pulled that item. So I don't see any budget adjustment to that. It sounds like he's got a handshake deal.
The four vehicles that were in the 2021 budget have been ordered, and there has been POs sent for those vehicles. The four vehicles that you see on item number four, just disregard those, pretend they're not even there, because those were vehicles that we're going to put into 2223 budget. So just put a line through those right now, because they don't exist right now at this point. Those are vehicles that we're going to go ahead and just put in our budget for next year. The catch is the four vehicles that we purchased this year have already sent POs for will not be delivered until August. So we won't, so those monies will have to be encumbered, because we will not actually buy those, give them money until next year's budget. Is that better, Jack?
Right. Yeah, the money's already set aside and budgeted.
Correct.
So there should be no, there should be no transfer of funds at this time for that. That's already encumbered.
Correct. And just to give you some information, if you're going to approve those, the Fentanyl and the scanner items, let me contact the vendor and find out if, when we, if we order them now, if we will receive them this year, or if they won't be available to us until next fiscal year. And that, I can let that, I can let Krista know that, so that will help there as best we can.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, it would, it's an ask for an additional $310,000 over what is currently budgeted, just to be clear.
At this, at this time, and I understood where you're coming from with the contingencies, taking care of it now, because if we are going to actually, if they come through and say we have one, we're going to ship it tomorrow, then contingencies will cover it until we go on to next fiscal year, at which time we fully intend to debate with you, Sheriff, on where we can get that money back from. That's the way I understand it.
Well, yeah, and I was gonna, in order to make things a little bit clearer, if, but I was gonna say if you could get it this year, use AB443 funds, and then next year we could pay you, going into the next budget, give you that money back. If it was in a case that you needed it right now, you could get it, and then it would be, I mean, it'd be easier for, Callie, I see.
Let me, let me talk to the vendor and find out when we would be able to purchase them, whether it's this fiscal year or next. If it's this fiscal year, I will use 443, knowing that you're going to reimburse me next year. I will converse with Krista and let her know that.
Okay, all right.
Fair enough?
Yep.
See, I'm saving money again, Gary.
No, I don't.
We aren't there yet, because we have to make a decision today.
That's true.
So, 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 I mean, we aren't going to wait for you to ask the question.
Go ask the question and come back, we'll wait.
Well, unless you're coming back after lunch.
I'm not comfortable doing that, because we're, now we're already stuffing his budget for 2223, and we're going, he does, he does 443 now, and then we're going to reimburse him. I just assume that we do it now under contingency. And.
I was just trying to, if I can get ahold of the vendor, and I'll try this afternoon, but you're going to have to make a decision, so.
Well, also, Mr. Leach did say probation, and HHS A will use this, so you can 87 them for the equipment and recoup some expenses there. Cory will be happy. Ms. Allen will be happy to do her share.
I don't, honestly, I don't see it happening in her department a lot, but maybe probation.
Supervisor Stoppa?
May I make a clear suggestion, and you can pull the board on it if you're, if you're willing?
Go for it.
Contingencies, we'll debate you in June. Well, we'll make the decision. You can, you can debate us.
Before, before we pull, though, can I get a projected amount, what it will reduce to contingencies to? So we know across the board what we're doing.
Just trying to unshare.
We're at 1.3 something? But you were adding.
Okay, so it's a 2.3, there's already 85, so it would be all totaled of 400 approximately and $5,000 reduction from here. So I just entered 2 million, 1.95.
That's contingencies?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just gonna check that here, but I believe that's right.
I'm a yes.
You said yes. Jack said yes?
That was me.
Oh, I got thrown around here. Okay, thank you. That was Stoppa. Supervisor Garimendi?
Can we just clarify exactly what the motion is that we're making right now?
We're, Jack, yeah, I'll clarify for you. We're gonna pull it out of contingencies right now, and then we're going to go after the sheriff's budget in June to make up for it.
So your, so the motion is to include the item five and six, $310,000 from contingencies in addition to the $85,000 in the CIO's recommended mid-year budget, and we move on. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I support that.
So what about that portion for the district attorney? We're not doing that. I thought the, we were going to do the lights and radio and all this.
It was like the $10,000 to $15,000 we had discussed, yes. We, and we resolved that with Mr. Hatfield at this time, I believe.
So $15,000 to be moved.
From their salary savings.
Somewhere else in their budget into $57,001.
Madam Chair, sorry. I don't support that, because I don't support using salary savings as a sweep to cover capital costs, because then we're gonna have every department who's got a vacant position using that vacant position by capital assets. We've seen that happen over and over again, or at the request of that. I think we could be setting bad precedent.
That is consistent with the usual guidance where you just explained.
And that's why I was very specific when I said five and six and not the DA. So if there is a different, so I am in the same place with Supervisor Garimendi. We need to go back to the other three, so Supervisor Stoppa, Tofanelli, and Callaway. How are you?
I get what Mr. Garimendi is saying. At this time, we're two and a half months away from preliminary, so I agree with him. So that makes three on no for number one. And I'm still a yes on five and six to be from contingencies now, and then move on.
Callaway, Tofanelli, do you have any?
I'm in agreement with Jack and Dan. And you?
Okay, so look, they, okay, we'll go back to, we will not be included in the DA. We'll stick to five and six, given the month, it's only two and a half months till preliminary. Okay. Is everyone on the same page now? Jack, I see you taking a snap.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. So is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
We do have to do roll call, so Supervisor Garimendi, I am going to start with you.
Garimendi, aye.
Supervisor Callaway?
Aye.
Vice Chair?
Aye.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Five oh. We're gonna take a quick five-minute break to allow everyone to vacate the room, and then we're gonna go on the proclamation, because we've got some individuals patiently waiting.
They're waiting all the time.
Okay, we're gonna come back and wrap up the last couple items here. So thank you, everyone who's patiently been waiting. We are going to go back to recognition and acknowledgement, and I'm gonna allow the clerk to read out the two proclamations that we will be reading out this afternoon or morning.
First, our proclamation, Health and Human Services Agency, adopt a proclamation declaring March 2, 2022 as Social Work Appreciation Month in Calaveras County.
And who has that? Gary, you have that one, right?
Social work.
Yes.
Appreciation.
They're the ones that are gonna be paying money for the Fentanyl machine and everything too, right?
Well, then, if they're gonna buy it, we want two. Case one breaks down, one-time money and one-time purchase.
So before Supervisor Tofanelli speaks, I allow it to go over to you.
Thank you. My name's Meili Johnson. I am the Deputy Director of Child Welfare for Calaveras County. And I just really wanted to just say a couple things. March is the month that we recognize, appreciate, and celebrate the social workers and all that they do every day to support Calaveras County's most vulnerable populations, overcome barriers, nurture change, and improve lives. Their work in our community is invaluable, and they really do make a big difference in the lives of people that they serve each and every day through not just protective services with children and adults, but also through behavioral health and responding to crises as they show up. And I really wanted to share with you guys a letter from one of our former foster youth who's now a young adult. And she wrote this letter last year and sent it in to us. So she starts out with, "I wanted to let you know that I am thankful for my social worker. She was a very important person in my life. She stuck by me when no one else did. Every adult in my life let me down, but not her. She was always there, even when I didn't think anyone would be, especially when I wasn't going down the best path. She accepted me for who I was and didn't try to make me change to fit what people thought I should be. When I graduated high school, I invited her to come watch my graduation. I didn't think she would come. It wasn't while she was working. When I saw her face in the crowd, I was so happy that I had someone there to cheer for me. She even made a big sign with my name on it, which made me feel important and like someone out there really cared. I keep her number in my phone just to remind me that there is someone who will care about me unconditionally, no matter what challenges I face. Please thank her and let her know that I will always remember her and what she did to change my life."
Supervisor Tofanelli?
I will read the proclamation. Adopt a proclamation declaring March 2, 2022 as Social Work Appreciation Month, whereas the social work profession for decades has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us, particularly during the global pandemic. And whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, the time is right for social work, embodies how social workers rose to meet the most pressing challenges of all of our, of all of our lifetimes throughout COVID-19 pandemic and economic, economy uncertainty. Whereas, social workers have always been present in times of crisis, helping people overcome barriers during their most vulnerable times, such as fires in our community, snowstorms, extreme temperatures, and other natural disasters. And whereas, social workers are committed to overcoming barriers, nurturing change, and improving lives for all Calaveras County residents. And whereas, social workers will continue to stand ready to assist Calaveras County residents as they navigate present and future challenges, including supporting families through connection to mental health services, educational resources, and community programs to promote self-sufficiency. And whereas, social workers work in all facets of our society to meet people, no matter their circumstance, and empower them to live to their fullest potential. Are there any other public comments? Corey?
I can absolutely do that. Corey Allen, Health and Human Service Agency Director, thank you. Supervisor Tofanelli, thank you to our Deputy Director, Meili Johnson. Really, I just wanted to acknowledge that this work is the kind of work that really is heart-led, but comes at such a price for people. You know, we are combating things like secondary trauma and resiliency, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that the social workers working here in Calaveras County are supported as they do this great work on behalf of your community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the board? Seen done, how about a motion?
So moved, Sir Vice Chair.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for a vote?
Roll call. Supervisor Garimendi?
Oh, yes.
Garimendi, aye.
Callaway?
Aye.
Vice Chair?
Aye.
Stoppa?
Aye, and thank you.
And myself, aye. And myself, aye.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Calaveras County's social workers, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors on this eighth day of March 2022 does hereby declare March 2022 as Social Work Appreciation Month. That should say, it says "social work," but I say "social worker appreciation month" in the county of Calaveras. Hey, wait, hold on.
Gotta get a picture.
Worry, little skate on that.
Thank you so much.
And we have one more, I believe.
Proclamation, Economic and Community Development, approve a proclamation designating March 2022 as Arts Education Month in Calaveras County.
Supervisor Callaway?
Totally, this is just totally my honor to do this, and the only, oops. And the only reason they're getting it is because they do not receive any government funding.
Not for the Music in the Parks, Ovations, Artist Studio Tour, or our arts education programs. I do, we do receive government funding from the state of California to keep the lights on and pay my salary, such as it is.
Kathy, this is just totally my honor, as a fan, and I believe a member of the Arts Council. This is recognizing March as Arts Education Month in Calaveras County, which really should be every month. March is officially recognized as California Arts Education Month by the California Department of Education. The state of California defines art education to include courses of study, interdisciplinary learning in dance, music, theater, design, visual, written, and media arts. And whereas, the arts are an essential part of a complete education, no matter if it happens at home, school, or community, which it does in our county. Whereas, these experiences encourage creative learning in children and young adults, and a few older ones. And whereas, a well-rounded education should include the stimulation and creative thinking that the arts help to develop. And it's important that we recognize and celebrate the essential role of arts education in our schools and our community. And whereas, students of all ages benefit from artistic learning, innovative thinking, and creativity. And just the fact that the two arts teachers from our high schools have put a show on, well, I better stop, because I could go on and on about what you do and what the Arts Council does. So I'm gonna pass it to the chair to call for any public comments and vote.
Any public comment? Okay, and with that, I'll call for a vote, and I'm gonna start with Supervisor Garminde.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Sorry, thank you.
Throw me off, Marina.
Oh.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and a second, Supervisor Garminde.
Garminde, aye.
Supervisor Callaway?
Aye.
Vice Chair?
Aye.
Stoppa?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes March 2022 as Arts Education Month in Calaveras as a way to further strengthen the importance of arts and share the message with friends, family, and community. This is passed and adopted by the board today in our county. Kathy, thank you so very much.
It's truly my pleasure. I'm starting, in, on April 1st, I'll be starting my seventh year as your Executive Director for the Calaveras Arts Council. I love all of our programs, but Arts Education and the Art Spirit Show, Marina and I are about on the same level right here. Please stop by and see it. The teachers do come in, they bring in all the artwork. They can possibly fit on walls and on pedestals. We invite all of the students of all of the high schools, whether you're homeschooled, or you're at Calaveras, or Bret Hart, or Gold Strike, or Mountain Oaks. The kids are always invited. At the end of the month, we will have a reception. I'll be sure you get an invitation. And we have the show juried ahead of time, so the artists receive ribbons and little cash prizes that doesn't come from government funding. I had to throw that in there for you, Marina. And we celebrate all of these kids, especially knowing how much art meant to them during the last two years. I wanted to just take a quick minute and say thank you to all of you. In the last couple of years, I've had a chance to get to know even more about our neighboring counties, and the Board of Supervisors, and other districts, et cetera. And we are so blessed to have all of you, because I know of districts that don't have our level of support, or encouragement, or attention. And I cannot begin to tell you the difference it makes, and how I can go to a confab and sit there and go, well, not in my county. My county loves the arts, and loves the people of Calaveras County. If you want to see how it's done, you just come see us, and we'll show you. And Marina, I look forward to seeing you dancing at Music in the Parks this summer. You betcha, and thank you especially, as you are now retiring from the board. Thank you for all that you have done for us all these years. Thank you very much. Oh, good. See, that's why I wear blue. And thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy, we're gonna move closer.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Very much.
They go on the clerk recorder's Facebook page.
Yeah?
I'm friends with them.
Okay, we have staff announcements, and Ms. Medina has patiently been waiting. So Ms. Medina, turn it over.
Good afternoon, everybody. I almost said "good morning," but I cut myself. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, respective board members, CAO Von Latta, our Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. So I have two announcements today, only two. The first one being is I would like to personally thank, and also our animal service staff, and everybody else in our Calaveras community, our volunteers. In February, they gave over 322 hours of their time. That means getting up very early to come and walk our pups at the shelter. In February, we had a record adoption of adopting over 12 of our pups. And Don, Lila, Max, Luna, Johnny, Tuesday, Alfalfa, Pity, Aurora, and Shilo went to loving homes in our Calaveras community. So thank you very much for taking them home, they are in their forever homes. And then next month, I will also be thanking our kitty volunteers, and I will be giving those numbers and presenting them to you at our next Board Supervisor meeting. My next announcement is, mark your calendars, for our first free rabies vaccine in a microchip clinic to be held next Saturday from 9 to noon. We have our attending veterinarian, Dr. Kathy Gatlin, who will be giving the rabies vaccines. And also our animal service staff, and Focus will be on hand. Thank you, Focus, for all the volunteer work that you do to make these events successful. Thank you, and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. Is there any other staff announcement that I may have missed?
There are any online requests?
Okay, and with that, we will move on to supervisor announcement, and I will start with Zoom Supervisor Garminde.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I will be returning and going directly to RCRC's annual meet, regular meeting. We have installation of officers and awards ceremony at the end of the day. I'd like to compliment my fellow supervisors on their blue and gold colors today. I'm very proud of that, and I think we all support the people of Ukraine as they fight for life and death for their freedom and democracy. So, thank you all very much. Can't see it well, but this is blue as well. So, that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Callaway?
I had a CSAC meeting last week, and the CSAC Board did something they don't normally do. We voted to oppose a potential ballot measure. Usually, CSAC only does oppose, or neutral, or support when something is a ballot measure. But this proposed ballot measure, it was the Taxpayer Protection Government Accountability Act. It was also opposed by the League of California Cities, and I'm not sure where RCRC is, but I'm sure RCRC is also in support of opposing this ballot measure. It would have a significant impact to cities, counties, schools, special districts. It'll amend the California Constitution, which would restrict state, cities, counties, schools, any other public, local agencies that would have to send any fee, not any, there are some exceptions, exemptions, to the voters. And it would also require two-thirds vote. So if we, for example, wanted to do a fee increase at Integrated Waste Management, that, forgetting stepping aside the 150, that would have to go. And it would severely limit any of these public agencies, be it state or local, from raising any revenues. The fees would have to be the required minimum amount necessary. Minimum would be hard to define, so if for, even the, if we sold any property, we could only sell it for what our minimum investment would be in the property. It will raise possible litigation, judicial oversight. And it, that's what supervisors, boards of the public agencies, the legislature, city councils are for. And so it was stringent enough that CSAC and the League of California Cities have taken a position to oppose. And that's all I have, and it's in the information I gave you. Yeah. Okay, that's all, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Topanelli?
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair, thank you.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Nothing to report at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a couple announcements. We, I believe, one, two, four of us, and staffers, went to the Cog groundbreaking last week for Phase 1 for wagon trail. That was a really great event, and it brought numerous countering officials. I think that's the most we've seen in one place, in this county, in a long time. And it was really great to see the partnerships and collaborations over the last couple decades together in one place. So thanks to you who came to that, Supervisor Garminde, Callaway, obviously, Topanelli was our emcee for the day, and he did a fabulous, fabulous job.
Thank you.
And our very own Robert Pakinter was a, Robert, you should speak like that more often. I was very thoroughly impressed with your words that day. For District 4, there will be a Copper Cove Rocky Road CSD meeting this Thursday at Black Creek at 6:00 PM, and I will be attending that. And last but not least, I just, today is International Women's Day, and I just wanted to do a shout-out to all of the female leaders, not only here in the county, but our partners, our kind of, our partners that we work and collaborate with. So give yourselves all a round of applause, and happy International Women's Day. And that is all I had to report out. So with that, we will see everybody next week. Thank you.